Good evening. And welcome to our board meeting tonight. Who please stand for the pledge.
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, um, I'd like to add one item to our agenda under new business A in respect to security grant, vote anticipated. We have a motion.
I make a motion that we add to the agenda under new business A, security grant.
Hold on a second. Thank you, Lee. On paper. Thank you. Okay, welcome everyone. We're going to move right on to exemplary people. I understand we have some students here that are fully prepared to be recognized and we welcome you to our board meeting tonight. Mr. Cobb, if you please come up and do the honors.
Every year we offer the PSAT to all of our students in grades 10 and 11. Participation in the PSAT during the junior year enrolls our students automatically in the National Merit.
I'm going to just ask you to hold for one second and maybe start over again now that the cameras got you. Are we all set there? Mr. Bachman? Good, thank you.
So every year we offer the PSAT to our grade 10 and 11 students. Participation in the PSAT during the junior year automatically enrolls our students in the National Merit Scholarship Program. We have two sets of students, first as an individual. The first student tonight being recognized is Dorian Thompson. Doria is among 3,100 outstanding participants being recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. His PSAT score placed him in the top 3% of more than 160,000 black Americans who took the PSAT in 2013. Dorian Thompson. Our next group. Can you stay out? You stay out.
Yeah, why don't you come on this side.
Our next group of students have Camila Borsey, Colleen Foley, Thomas Culp, Asha Miraladron, Lisca Gutierrez, and Bailey Horton. I don't have Jeremy Young and Joe Pyrez, they couldn't make it. But this group of students is being recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation as well as commended students. There are 34,000 commended students nationwide. Commended students place in the top 5% of the more than 1.5 million students who entered the National Merit Scholarship competition by taking the PSAT in 2013. And that's this group right here.
I think I have these in the right order.
Congratulations. That's wonderful. Congratulations.
Come on this side, we're going to get a group picture.
Colleen, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thomas, congratulations. Felicia. Asha. Congratulations. Nice talk.
Bailey? Oh, sorry.
David, congratulations.
I may have Lisca's, Annabelle might have Lisca's.
Oh, okay. I don't have it.
Okay.
We have one for you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now if you, one of all of you slide down again. Get in front of us, older folks here. Hold your things in front of you.
Is everybody okay with this being posted?
And then try to find a place. Try to find a place in between.
We are so proud of you. Nice job. Go home and do some studying now. Or take the rest of the night off and watch TV. It's wonderful. Okay, we will, we will move on to item five consent agenda if I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion, a second? Secondly? Any discussion? Or in favor? Motion passes, thank you. We'll move on to the report of the committees and liaisons and start out with our Mastic representatives.
So the, the first thing we have is our junior college planning night is tonight. So guidance counselors are meeting right now actually in the auditorium with junior parents and students to kind of get the, get the ball rolling and get them looking at colleges and getting kind of help to start thinking about planning for college, like financially especially. And then also a report card has come out tonight for quarter one. It is not like how it used to be where you would get like your, the physical piece of paper. Now what they're doing is they're going to email the parents, like a link, and they click on the link and then they will be able to access their students' report card from there. And then also on the, this Saturday, Mastic will be hosting the SAT test.
Alrighty, um, this Wednesday held in the library will be the World Language Honor Society induction. And then also this Wednesday, the underage drinking forum for the freshmen will be in the auditorium. And that's a component of the health curriculum and it's really highly stressed and if a student, and it's encouraged that a student in their parent goes and if they can't go, they have an alternative assignment that's given in their, in their health class. And then next Wednesday is the in-school performance of the play, which is called Damn Yankees. And that will be shown 7:30 PM Friday and Saturday night and then 2 o'clock on Sunday. And their plays are always so good and we love seeing them in school. It's a nice, nice little change up in the day. Next Tuesday is the Veterans Day celebration with the Smiley's. And it's part of the One Town One Read Initiative. And it's for the book dinner with the Smiley's. And the, the premise of the book is that it's a family and then the father goes off to service in the military. And the family has a different person and it kind of started off where a different person in the town would come and have dinner with them. And then ended up expanding and they had people like the senator come and eat with them. And it was a really, it was, I heard it was a really good book and I've got to read it before then, so.
All right, well, one big thing happening at Mastic right now is our Red Army Club. And the Red Army Club is basically our fan section and they've been coming to all sort of sporting events like football games. They were at our soccer game last week. And they come up with a different chants and different cheers and they kind of help like cheer on the students. It's actually really fun, like having experienced, it was like the best experience of my life. I felt like I had a lot of people cheering me on. But they also spread awareness for a different foundation such as breast cancer and also another kid Connor Scalia. We raise awareness for him because he got a tumor removed from his heart this past Wednesday, removed from behind his heart. So everyone wore purple to school and we threw purple streamers in the air during halftime. And that was like a good thing we did to help support him. So at SWCs, the swim team broke the 200 meter relay record and Grace Gusttinas broke the 100 meter freestyle record. Boys soccer lost to Avon today and girls volleyball is currently playing right now during their first round of states. And football has their senior night this Friday. And girls soccer has their second round this Thursday for the state tournament. So that's where the sports are at.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Communications committee.
Communications committee met tonight. We were joined by our two student representatives that are helping us. Actually Lucas Rowan was not able to be there but Catherine Castillo, Castillo was. And all of the principals joined us as well. So we, we looked at the Monroe Public Schools Facebook page and I just wanted to underscore that it is MonroePublicSchools-Connecticut where you can find that, that Facebook page. And we talked about the best way to, to really show what is happening in all the schools. And we, we're, we're still talking about how that process is going to happen, but we think doing it on one page is, is a more efficient and more current way to do it. So I want to do a shout out to Christine who has been helping with that and we're posting and we'll be having some other conversations internally. John Batista has done a great job in posting everything to date and we, we want to see about some, some other resources perhaps that could help, help him not have to have that in addition to his other duties. So more to come.
Thank you. Policy.
Policy committee reviewed several policies this evening. We'll bring some of those for first review next time including graduation requirements. And we have some on the agenda for second review tonight.
Ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee met last week. Progress is steady, okay? We actually saw some previews of what reports will look like, both from the demographer Malone and McBroom. And also a sample of what the database will look like for the facilities, projects, and the condition of the facility. So very optimistic that we are on target and you know, we should be able to reconvene the full committee in January.
Any other committee reports? Okay. We'll move on to public participation if there's anybody in the audience that cares to speak. And seeing nobody, we'll move on to report to the superintendent.
I received some really exciting news this morning. When I came in and opened my email, we got a message from the governor saying that the Monroe application had met with approval, as did most other towns I think, or all towns that submitted security grants. If you remember, over the past two years, we have undertaken a massive amount of work in our facilities to upgrade, to improve security, both in the form of facilities enhancements but also technology, police presence and behavior. We expended approximately $802,000 in that effort over a two-year period. I'm sorry, $815,000 over that two-year period. And we were notified today that we will be receiving approximately $304,000 in, as reimbursement through the state grant application. So that's just terrific news. And I can't thank Gabby and Jack any more than saying thank you for all the hard work that really went behind the scenes making those projects run smoothly, but also in assembling the grant and double checking the numbers and really grinding out the grant applications. So thank you to Jack and Gabby for all the work you've done over the past two years with us. We really appreciate it. And so we do have a new source of revenue for this year at approximately $304,000. We, we've been very busy this year, the board and I. The past probably 13 or 14 months, we've negotiated and settled four contracts in the district. We have one last contract to do. The nurses' contract expires at the end of June. And so I was looking forward to probably starting that process once the holidays are past us and we could wrap up the last contract and that'll hold us for a couple of years. A health and safety update. I just want you to be aware that when things like enterovirus, Ebola, MRSA, swine flu, you know, you, you name the disease occurs, there's always, you know, some real concerns because schools house so many people and the contact throughout a school is, is just so much more intense than in the general public. I want everyone to know that we always take health and safety as our first priority. And to that end, I am, whenever an issue arises like this, I'm in constant communication with the Trumbull Monroe Board of Health Director, Patrice. Patrice will always alert me if there are issues that are looming out there. And so, you know, we, we have been talking about Ebola, we have been talking about enterovirus. We've been heeding their advice that there was nothing, nothing for us to do at this time, but to be aware of what we know and to monitor almost on a daily basis. And that's why we sent out the instant messenger last week with some very fundamental, basic advice to people about this time of year in particular with the flu, with enterovirus. Hand washing, you know, covering your sneezes, staying home if you're ill are still the most important and viable ways of avoiding catching any of these, these kinds of things. So we continue to monitor that. Also regarding health and safety, if you'll remember a couple of years ago, we had began posting our cafeteria, Board of Health, they're not investigations, they're inspections. Okay, thank you Gabby. We continue to do that. You can find that on our, on our webpage very easily, the health reports. I'm very pleased to say that all of our schools' most recent reports were in the, you know, A category, okay? So everything is, is going very smoothly with that. And that's it.
Thank you. I will move on to item nine. Jack, turn some time over to you to talk about copiers.
Thank you. I have a few brief slides for you on the copier contract which is coming due June 30th. It ends with our current vendor Xerox. So we're in the process of looking at new companies and the new contract starts up July 1 of 2015. So we've already interviewed five different vendors. They represent the following companies Cannon, Kyrosira, Savin, Xerox. Some of them represent multiple manufacturers. There are a couple people who actually came to us and represented the same manufacturer. So that's why you see four in the list. We've conducted reference checks on every single one of them. We've talked to the municipalities and the school districts that they deal with to get real-time feedback on how their performance is in those districts and municipalities. It's very important for us. We have had some issues with our current contractor and we want to know going into the next contract exactly what other municipalities have had to say about their experience with their contract, with their copier company. Just to give you some feedback about the kinds of things we'll see in the next contract, all of the machines coming out now are multifunction. One of the, the acronyms you'll hear is MFP standing for multi-function printing. All the machines will include copying, printing, and scanning features. All of them will be on the computer network so that they're all accessible by the various machines in the district. The other feature that we're looking at very seriously is swipe card access for the machines. There's some really great benefits by doing that. One of them is you can pick up your print job at any machine anywhere. So you print to a website and then you walk up to a photocopier, whichever one's most convenient for you, wherever you are at the building at that point in time. You swipe, it provides a list of all the copying jobs that you've sent previously. You can pick the job that you want, comes out right there. Now, the nice thing about that is if you've ever walked by printers or copier machines in a large organization, you see lots of paper sitting there. Matter of fact, if you walked in tonight, you saw the scrap paper from the librarians in big paper boxes. It's from old print jobs that's being reused as notebook paper. So it really cuts down significantly on paper waste. So that's a nice feature. The other thing that it does is with the student IDs, it gives another purpose to the IDs that's important. You know, when there's a real value to the IDs, there's not as much of an issue in bringing them in. So for students, they can use their, their swipe cards for printing. In addition, we can also set up some quotas on them. When we have color printing, color printing is really expensive compared to black and white. So one of the things we could do is set up a lower number on number of color prints allowed to students per month, higher number for black and white. I know that's probably not too popular, right? But there too will help us to use resources efficiently. And just by doing that, students will think about, okay, I've got, you know, X number of color copies, copies for the month, I have to use this wisely. So it will help to ensure that we're using the resources well. Another really neat feature on the machines now is direct access to the Google Drive. And this too is another way of promoting efficiency of resources. This extends to some current work that we're doing. And I have this next slide here about Google use. The way that Google Apps and Drive is set up is it really promotes sharing resources electronically as opposed to printing them. So the more that we use that, the more likely we're going to do things in a paperless sort of way. So the fact that the copy machines tie into this automatically really helps to promote better use of resources. We have been signing out Chromebooks in the library here. If you remember, it wasn't all that long ago, we had all the desktop machines behind me in the various corners of the library. The desktops are gone and now what students do is they come in and they sign out Chromebooks for use in the library. These are our stats just for the months of September and October. And just in those two months, we've had 9,348 signouts of Chromebooks by students. So the demand is there, the use is there. When they get onto the Chromebooks, they're off into Google Apps. That's what they're using. So that and surfing the web as well. But it really, you know, points to some positive use in the apps environment, which is really going to do more for us instructionally, do a lot more for teaching and learning, and also help us to conserve resources.
Jack?
Yeah?
Are we running short? I mean, we had students come in and there's not the Chromebooks available?
From, the feedback I've gotten from library staff is we typically have enough, but we are getting close to the point where they're fully signed out. Maybe, what have you guys seen as you've come in?
I use them every day during my free period and I've never had an issue with it. I love it. It's really convenient. Because you can like sit in the comfortable chairs with like it and stuff. I like them a lot. And I think the black and white idea, I think that's really great because sometimes people are just kind of, you know, like printing, like not for a useful purpose. So I know like some kids would be like a little dramatic about that, but I think it's completely fine.
Yes.
One of the things that we discovered that was an unanticipated consequence was the crush for Chromebooks, especially early in the morning. Mr. Cobb has actually had to reassign some teachers' corollary duties to assist the staff here in managing that crush of, of requests for, for the Chromebooks. And then the other thing, Jack, I don't know if you want to speak to it about the printing, you know, that a lot of kids are coming in first thing in the morning and wanting, needing a Chromebook right away because they need to print their homework out because they've been told not to use the printer at home.
So.
Jack?
Yes?
Have we thought about alternatives like, I don't know, either checking them out for an extended period of time or renting them out for the year or some other alternatives to prevent all of the churn?
We've, we've had a number of meetings about this. I think in the ideal world, what we'd really like to see happen is more devices coming in from home. The trick for us is this, we are doing our best to backfill devices in classrooms where devices aren't coming in from home. Classes sign out full Chromebook carts in the library for full class instruction. If two or three students are missing a device, it really becomes an impossible situation for a teacher to teach a lesson that uses technology. So we're doing our best to make all of our devices available in as efficient a system as possible. But we could definitely use more devices coming in from home. We could use some more here too to fill in the gaps when they don't come in. So that's, that's the balance that we're trying to strike. Because the teachers really are doing a great job in introducing more and more lessons that use technology in a meaningful way within their instruction.
So then, Jack, would you say that there's a lot of kids that have access to an iPad or a laptop and they're not bringing them in?
We see a good percentage of students where that's the case, yeah. Now, I've been doing a number of sessions at the middle school with Jack Chicalini with middle school parents in hopes to build understanding there of you don't need, and I think part of the problem is, parents are concerned. When I send in my, my student, my child with a thousand dollar laptop or an eight hundred dollar laptop, people get concerned. I would too as a parent. The Chromebooks work great. It's an outlay of $200. So realistically, any one of us goes out to buy a device tomorrow, it's, you know, if you've got a freshman in high school, that device is not going to go with them to college, no matter what it is. Whether it's a thousand dollar laptop or a $200 Chromebook, it's not going to be a current technology four years from now. So the word we've been trying to get out to parents is, save your money. Spend $200 on a Chromebook. It does what we need it to do and you don't have to worry. So your student can just bring the thing in. It's light, it's small, you know, it's easy to carry around, it's an aluminum case, it can get thrown in the backpack, you don't have to worry about it. One of the stats I've shared with some of the parents is our netbooks, which was our first acquisition to support BYOT at the middle school level. The failure rate on them is roughly 60 to 70% versus the Chromebooks. We've got hundreds upon hundreds of these things out there. Failure rate is in the single digits. The things are very hearty. There's very little with them to go wrong. There's no moving parts. So I think as we really get parents to understand this and take hold of this, we'll be in a better place. And then, you know, I know the board has asked me questions in the past too. Should we be considering Microsoft devices rather than Google devices? Bang for the buck in an educational environment, we get so much more by going this way than we do in a Microsoft environment. For, for instruction in an educational environment, it really is a better way for us to go. So I think if we can continue to make purchases on the board side, we're going to get more devices for less money. And if we can continue to talk with parents about, look, spend the 200 bucks and save the money for buying the big laptop for college, we'll all be better off.
What reasons do students give for not bringing in technology?
Well, I went to STEM in, in eighth grade and every single person brought in their laptop every single day and we, every single person had something and we all used it. But then I came to Mastic and I haven't really brought in my laptop unless my teacher has specifically told me to. And that's just because like not everyone will have a laptop and just as you said, if not everyone has a piece of technology, then we can't do the lesson like on our laptops. So I think that's one big reason why we don't.
And normally teachers will tell us like a day or two before we have, they'll say like, we're all going to be using computers tomorrow for a lesson, so if you want to bring in like technology from home, please do so. So, and then the kids that have it will bring it in and the other kids will use the Chromebooks, so. But I mean, even still when a teacher says that it's only a few kids will because, you know, they think, well, we'll have the Chromebooks anyway, so why, you know, because like you said, people being cautious about bringing in expensive technology and things of that sort, but.
I think I've seen like a lot more use this year than years past. Like now this year, like a lot of times at lunch, I'll see like my friends like pull out their laptops, like work on like their college application or stuff. Or in years past, I've never seen like laptops at a lunch or something.
That is true.
The good news is we really are progressing. We really are making progress. Two years ago, we did not have carts in the departments at Mastic High School. The only cart we had was one in math and we had one in science. There was nothing in English, nothing in social studies. CTE, we didn't have a cart there. We just didn't have the resources to promote the model. We've done a lot to get carts out to really promote the use in terms of getting back, you know, backfill devices when students bring theirs in and somebody doesn't have it. So we're getting there, we just need to, we need to stay the course. And just two last slides for you. All of the, the copier companies that we're dealing with are all in consortium bids. The nice thing about consortium bids is much larger organizations than a single school district collaborate to create the bid and there's much better leverage for good pricing. So we're working on, with all these vendors, to look at their consortium bids. In addition, it gives us more control in choosing the vendor. Given that they're already in approved bid, we can select one bid over another and, you know, based on feedback that we get from other districts about how good service is, we can choose one vendor over another in that we already have approved bids for both vendors and then look at other aspects of what they have to provide the district. And just last steps here, so we've completed an audit of all of our machines and how much they print that will contribute to decisions moving forward in terms of what kinds of machines go in. And then we might actually be able to get some sample machines to get out there this spring so that users can actually experience them before we fully implement. So that's something we're looking at. We're going to be gathering quotes, initial quotes to build next year's budget. That's in the works right now. to build next year's budget. That's in the works right now. And then ultimately, we'll come back to Board of Ed, Town Council, Board of Finance with recommendations for each one of those bodies to make a decision about where we'll be going for that contract that starts on July 1.
Is that a town and Board of Ed contract?
It's both, yes. Town and Board of Ed.
And so regardless of which vendor you choose now, you get the better pricing because they're not putting together their own RFP. It's sort of like a state bid. They're just taking off of whatever's out there and approved, and they're buying into that price as the vendor.
Correct, correct. We're actually looking at three different bid lists right now. It might extend beyond that. But the other nice thing about these consortium bids is they can go lower than those prices. So, we can start from that point and then have dialogue about, okay, can you do better with this? So, there really are a number of benefits to going that direction.
Any other questions?
What are the issues with the current vendor?
We've had service issues with the current vendor. Both Town Hall and Massey High School, which are two of our highest volume areas, had breakdowns that lasted days. Dialogue, there was extensive dialogue between myself, Jim Augustine, Steve Vavreck, and the vendor. It should have never gotten to that level, but their responsiveness was of great concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to 10. Whole business, Massey graduation requirements. Mr. Cobb.
We began the conversation last time about raising the graduation requirements. And one of the things that was of concern, as it always should be, is that when you raise requirements, what are the implications for staffing, et cetera, okay? And I know Joe has done a lot of work in that regard. Currently, 94% of our students earn 22 and 1/2 or more credits, okay? So, we're talking somewhere in the vicinity of a couple of dozen students under the 22 and 1/2 kind of threshold, which I think would be a rather insignificant, would have no impact on FTE, right, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, I think the bigger, I think the bigger challenge lies when we move it from 22.5 to 25. That's the more significant one with the legislation that changes.
But that's on hold until that legislation passes, right? You're just going to prepare for the 22 and 1/2?
Exactly. We're going to prepare for the 22 and 1/2. The legislation
Exists.
Has already exists. It just, it doesn't take place until this current seventh graders, the current seventh graders, it pertains to them, which isn't that far away because there'll be a ninth grade in two years. But it's that graduating class of 2020.
I mean, when it goes to the 25 credits, then it, with the specificity, as we talked about last time, the specificity of the course requirements is going to become the issue, okay? Not only because of the constraints it's going to put on student selection to some degree, but also it's going to create problems with us in terms of what certification areas we have. And so, there may have to be shifts in departments. You know, if CTE, for instance, requirements become greater than they currently are, then I may have to add CTE teaching staff, but eliminate staff from another department in order to meet that. So, it is going to get a bit sticky when you go to the 25 credits. And as I said last time, I fully expect that the legislature is going to be discussing this in this session and perhaps in the next as well. But I think the 22 and 1/2 credit requirement is a perfectly appropriate credit requirement. As Joe indicated to you last time, we are at the very bottom of the derg in terms of our credit requirement. Our kids are being, you know, very smart in taking more credits and to prepare for, you know, their post-high school experience. And so, that's why I think we're really in a good place to raise it to the 22 and 1/2 with little or no impact on the FTE.
And in the two areas, well, the one area really that we're looking, was adding currently, the distribution is three credits in mathematics. We're looking to increase that to four. We looked at that. The overwhelming, probably closer to 95, 96% of our seniors are taking a math class now. So, that's not a huge paradigm shift for them. And then we're just looking to pick up another credit in an elective area. We're not looking to be as prescriptive right now as the legislation is saying that we're going to need to be in 2020.
Any feedback from our Massey representatives? Is this going to affect you at all?
I think, no. Most of the people I know take math classes their senior year, too.
A lot of people take full course load senior year, so I don't think it'd be a problem.
Yeah.
I think 25 could be kind of a lot. I'm trying to think. I think I have, like, 27, and I've taken, like, extra gym classes and some extra classes. So, 25 could be tough maybe. I think 22 is fine.
Lee?
Are you looking for a motion?
I think Donna's got a motion on this, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we increase our graduation requirements to 22 and 1/2 credits for the class of, I guess, 2018, because this affects the current freshmen and lower.
Yep.
Not the sophomores and up.
I think when I had presented, I said for 2018 and 2019.
Yep. So, for the 2018, class of 2018 and...
Beyond.
Okay, I have a motion to increase the Massey graduation requirements to 22 and 1/2 credits for the year beginning for the class of 2018 and beyond. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
And when do we anticipate going to the 25? When the current seventh graders, which is the 2020 class, may get to freshman year, so in two years, they'd be doing this again, right?
And that one may, that's going to be, if nothing else changes, and I think, you know...
If they pass that legislation.
Well, it is
Well, it is passed.
It's whether or not
Whether it gets amended.
And gets altered. If it doesn't get altered, then, you know, we have to look at, you know, changing it, like you said, to 25 and really laying out the prescription that it costs for. Which is, I don't know if you remember, but the eight credits in humanities, the nine credits in the STEM areas, the three and 1/2 credits in career and life skills, and so forth.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Did you approve that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed it. All right, the motion passes. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
We have a curriculum proposal. It's on page 12. I have the right one there. This is AP Physics. Who's our curriculum person? Alan?
Excuse me?
You want to tell us about this, or is there anything else we need to know? AP Physics.
We've got an AP Physics course. Together, both the courses are going to cost us, it goes around $3,000, very much correctly. So, we just have AP Physics, and the Forensics class was so popular that the kids want to keep it going, but a Forensics Part II class for the 11th and 12th graders. So, those are the two courses on the docket.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the AP Physics classes and appendix class.
I'll make a motion that we approve Science AP Physics for grades 11 and 12, and Science Forensics Part II for grades 11 and 12, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we're on to policies. George, you want to walk us through this?
Okay, three on the agenda. Policy 5112, age of attendance. This changes the dropout age from 16, 17 years old. Policy 5113, attendance and truancy. This basically narrows the scope of the policy and then leaves it up to the SOPs, which are included in all the student handbooks and on the websites to fully define the procedures for the individual schools. And then, policy 9325, the change there is that we are going to require a second review for items that have a financial impact to the district.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion?
Yes.
To approve the policies as written?
Do I have a second? Mr. Muse, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. We're on to item D. We viewed these field trips our last meeting. Starting on page 39, we have a trip to Montreal. And since I saw the flyer in the hall, I think there's one of France, right?
The Germany and the Massey chamber fire and camaraderie to Italy.
Italy, okay.
The Germany trip is 2016, as is the Coral group. The Massey band to Montreal is this year in April 2015.
Okay. Need a motion to approve these three field trips?
Make a motion to approve the three field trips. One to Montreal, one to Germany, and one to Italy.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. What was the flyer up that had France on it? Was that like last year's or something?
Joe, do you recall a flyer about France?
Never mind.
Yeah, there was a trip this year to Montparnais. Yeah, that one got passed. It was two minutes.
Fire.
Because the two of the ones that are on here are for next
Right.
Next one.
Got it. Okay, we will move on to item 11A, the security grant. Looking for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we place the money that we received from the security grant of $304,000 and change and put that into the capital reserve account.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? And the motion passes. Thank you. I will move on to item 12.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you.